Welcome new employee Nancy Posado as manager of planning. Nancy comes from the city of London with 20 years in planning. Nancy will be working with Steve Evans in the interim to bring her up to speed as well as to assist with the official plan amendments. So, welcome Nancy. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and through you to members of council. I'm very much looking forward to meeting you all in person one day. Unfortunately, that's at this time, that's not possible, but hopefully in the soon in the future. I'm also excited to be serving Elgin County and county council. I know council's strategic plan has identified a number of priorities for the planning department. And I am looking forward to connecting with the local planners and beginning work on some of these priorities as well. So, thank you.
Welcome Nancy. Next order of business is the closure of peculiary interest in general nature thereof. The minutes from May 26th, were there any errors or omissions? Can I have a mover and second for the minutes, please?
Catcher Bob.
Move by Cal. Seconder?
Purcell.
Second by Purcell, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We have delegations, I don't know if Megan or Bruce is be able to get online.
Not yet, Mr. Warden.
Sally, do you want to speak in the interim?
I can just say, I know that Megan talked to me. It's saying that they were definitely coming in, but I'd rather let them present it to you. I think, you know, it's what they are concerned about. And I think it's important that they present it.
Okay, well, we'll leave that on later on in the meeting then. Can I have a motion to move into the committee, the whole, please? Sorry?
Sir.
Marks.
Who moved it?
Jones.
Moved by Jones, second by Marks, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. First report is mine from on this is on the COVID, you have my report. And I just want to emphasize the COVID-19. As of today, we have no occurrences of positive cases with residents or staff. And this is largely due to our dedicated staff at our homes as well as our staff who have been willing to be redeployed to our homes. Find workers who have kept this deadly virus out of our county homes. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Questions on the report? Need a motion received and filed? Over and second please. McPhail, I'll move the report. Moved by McPhail, seconder?
French.
Second by French, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next report is Jeff from the tree inspector and weed inspector, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and Elgin County Council. The advanced package was my report for the first quarter of 2020 from January 1st to March 31st. That shows the logging activity and weed inspection activity for the first quarter. A total of 18 applications to harvest were submitted from January 1st to March 31st. Four for West Elgin, two in Dutton Dunwich, two in Southwood, two in Central Elgin, three in Malahide and five in Bam. So, spread across the county. Total volume for harvest in that period of time was 578,000 board feet. The total forested area involved was just shy of 460 acres. In that period of time, two applications were received and permitted for tree cutting on identified slopes in the municipality of Central Elgin. Those were the first two slope amendment permits that we did issue. Did receive two applications to clear portions of woodland within the county. They're still in process, but for the total amount of nearly five acres to be cleared, 4.7 acres. Over the first quarter, discussions were ongoing with non-compliance or regarding non-compliance of a court ordered reforestation order for a landowner that was charged with violations of the bylaw back in 2015. With regard to weed inspection, weed complaints and then just a general update. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions, annual weed inspectors conference was canceled this year. It was usually held in mid-April. And following that meeting is when I would usually notify partner municipalities of the need to place the weed destruction orders and would follow with any specific instructions from the province. But since it was canceled this year, I was able to send that notice out a little bit earlier than I normally would. And then the industry news, I thought this would be something that would be interesting to many of the counselors in case they've heard something. It went out in a report that I was deferred a couple of months ago, just about the oak wilt. Just it's a disease that's moved across northeastern the United States and it's in the Detroit River just across Windsor. It's one of those diseases, it's a fungal disease that more or less girdles the tree from within and limits the movement of nutrients and water up and down the tree. And eventually will kill the red oak species. A lot of the white oak species type of trees are more tolerant or more resistant, but they quite often will die as well. So, you can see in my report that there's three main ways for that disease to spread. One of them is from tree to tree contact, primarily root to root contact for trees that are growing close together. The other is just human movement of firewood and wood products. That's always the biggest vector for these diseases. And then the other one is those nettoylid beetles. We used to call them beer bugs when I was a kid. Very active in the April, mid-April to mid-July timeframe. So, if there's any pruning or anything of that nature, the bugs pick up the sap and then can move that sap infected sap to healthy trees. So, I know you guys have kind of seen this report already, but I just wanted to send it again in case there is any specific questions that you might want answered that I can look up and bring forward at a future date.
Thank you, Jeff. In regard to disease, I was in the bush yesterday, I noticed a lot of the beech trees. I'm starting to get rusty leaves on, is there a disease on the beach?
Yes, Mr. Warden, there is a number of diseases impacting beech trees right now. Whether to say it's one of those or not, I can't say without seeing it. I'm definitely not an expert on them, but definitely the most heard about one is the beech bark disease. It's definitely in Elgin County, but there's also another one that they don't know a lot about called the beech leaf disease. I hope to do a little bit more research on that one and bring that one forward to a future meeting of council. This is an FYI. I have seen it.
Sorry? Kill the beech trees?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, questions for Jeff on his report?
Just to comment, Sally. In the beech has almost virtually wiped out all the beech trees in the spry firewoods. Just so you know. We're near the path and blasting on the path.
Okay, thanks Sally. See done, can I have a move and second for the report, please?
Catcher Bob.
Moved by Ketchba, seconder. Second by Jiguer, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Al, you have the next report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. Before you use a report on the homes notice and extension of service accountability agreements, the extending letter. It is a requirement under the Local Health System Integration Act that the LYN enters into a service accountability agreement with each health service provider that it funds. The county of Alvin has a multi-sector service accountability agreement for both Bobbiar Villa and Terrace Lodge through the adult day program. And then with the three homes, a long-term care service accountability agreement. Announced earlier this year, the 2019-2020 agreement was extended from April 1st to June 30th of this year. However, in light of the current COVID-19 environment, the lens and Ontario Health it's not realistic to press ahead and engage in a soft refresh process that would further pressure health service providers and a system as a whole. So, the lens and Ontario Health have received endorsement from the Ministry of Health to continue with the extension of the 2020-21 fiscal year saw for the period of July 1, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. The notice and extension of service accountability agreement extending letter was attached to the report for your reference. The recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council authorize staff to sign the notice and extension of service accountability agreement letter. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks Michelle. Questions for Michelle on her report?
Report.
Moved by Mark, seconder.
Jones.
Second by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're doing the next report?
Yes, Mr. Warden. Through you, Mr. Warden, to county council. This report follows up on council's request to further contextualize the library's 2019 performance statistics presented to council on April 28th. We do use different tools to assess library performance and adjust services where necessary. The ERUPLA guidelines is one such tool and I've attached this report, the analysis we completed relative to these guidelines in November 2018. From time to time, we do compile benchmarking data relative to our peers in areas such as collection size, facility size, hours of operation. However, the most comprehensive resource to compare performance, a library performance is the annual statistics provided by the Ontario Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture Industries, which are available up to 2018. I've used these statistics as a basis for this report and I've applied them to those systems that border on Elgin County to give you a regional comparison. I have highlighted throughout the report that there are some challenges in interpreting this stats. However, they still remain the most comprehensive and do give a means for comparison. One matter I would really like to stress is that governance and administration of each system is very much unique in the province. And Elgin is probably the most integrated to the county structure of any system in Ontario. Each system also makes choices as to the number of branches they choose to operate based on local service needs. There are also factors such as branches that may have existed pre-amalgamation and want to continue those branches. So, again, each system does make choices on how many branches they wish to operate, which does impact overall costs and staffing levels, those sorts of things. One thing that I would like to really highlight is that our reciprocal arrangements with St. Thomas Public Library and London Public Library, which explains the attachment area that we're using in the report. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions related to that. I have provided the report analysis of a few key comparators in the areas of active cardholders per capita, program attendance, operating cost for resident, circulation per capita. And I have also given you results that can be interpreted and look forward to some goals that we're setting. To these results. As far as results that do stand out, we are certainly lucky to increase the number of card, active cardholders. That is something we've identified that has been stagnant for us. And so, we've allocated funds in our budget towards a marketing campaign to address that. One of the areas we were going to target were schools and of course, that is currently difficult to do. But still, it remains something that we do want to improve. And certainly a strength for us, it relates to programming where we are a leader. And again, I've indicated targets that we consider going forward. One of them is that we want to continue to grow our circulation by at least about 1% a year. But I think now it's very difficult to look at what any targets that are going to be met relative to 2019 going into 2020 as a result of our closure. I think one of the things that we do have to really understand is that our usage is shifting very dramatically to a lot of online usage. And so, we're going to really have to rethink how we're analyzing our stats and what goals we're setting relative to this drastic change in usage that's occurring and it's likely to be with us for quite some time. We do appreciate that council wants to see our annual reports further contextualized and clear goals and targets set going forward. And of course, council will have a chance to further analyze library performance as part of the service delivery review taking place. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any further questions that council may have.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on his report?
Warden, it's Counselor French, could I make a comment, please?
Go ahead, Mary.
I'd just like to say to Brian that his report is very informative and enlightening and I thank him for his hard work. That type of report really gives us a lot of information and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. Any other questions or comments for Brian?
Mr. Warden, it's Dominique.
Go ahead, Dominique.
Yes, I want to echo Counselor French's comment. I really, really appreciate this additional information. The context is everything and I think we already knew that the performance is excellent. And I think putting it in context really validates that and confirms that. As far as targets, I know they are moving targets, but the only way you can know that you're moving a target is if you have one in the first place. So, I appreciate the difficult circumstances, but I will reemphasize that having targets is key at all times. So, great work, thank you so much.
Thanks Dominique, any other questions for Brian? See none, because I have a mover and second to receive the report, please.
移到
Moved by Purcell, second by Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the report is carried.
Thank you. Al, you're doing your next report on that. I think you're muted, Al. Still can't hear you. Hello? Am I the only one? Still can't hear you, Al. Can you hear me? Okay, now I can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. The county of Elgin Wide Area Network, or WAN, consists of private high-speed connections between the administration building, data center and the county's three long-term care homes. Because Elgin Manor serves as a backup data center for the county, the connection between it and the administration building is 10 times faster than the connection with other homes. Increased speed provides capacity necessary to operate hot standby servers as well as off-site backups of all data servers. Traffic volume between the administration building and our nine libraries can be handled by public internet connections such as Bell, Eastlink and Rogers, which using secured GRE protocol and was not included in the WAN RFP. The WAN provides staff at the long-term care homes with access to resources at the data center such as the file server. The WAN is also used to route internet traffic from all locations, both staff and public, through the firewall out to the internet. The current contract for WAN services with Eastlink has been in place for five years. During that time, Eastlink has responded to our need for increased internet capacity driven by the homes and libraries by providing incremental bandwidth increases at no charge. A review of our WAN requirements identified the following needs. One, provide backup internet connections to each of the long-term care homes. Although the loss of internet connection at the administration building is infrequent, a backup internet connection would ensure that connection to resident care and pharmacy information is not lost. Two, increased internet bandwidth to meet the demand from staff and the public, primarily from the libraries. In order to meet increased demand and to future-proof the WAN for the next three to five years, the RFP included an increase in bandwidth to the administration building from 1,000 to 2,000 megabytes per second. This is necessary to deal with the increased internet speeds at the libraries and to accommodate IT services provided to our municipal partners. The increased bandwidth of the WAN connection to the administration building means that an upgrade to our main router will also be required this year. This upgrade was part of our asset management plan and is contained within the 2020 capital budget. On April 29th, the county proposed to provide high-speed wide-area network to include the administration building and our three long-term care homes. The RFP closed on May 20th, 2020. Questions were received during the process from proponents and addendum one was issued. For the RFP, not requested during the question period. The county received two electronic submissions. Upon further review of the proposals, received one complete proposal was received from Eastlink and one partial proposal was received from Packet Telecourt to service one of the four facilities with internet service only. Due to the fact that only one complete submission was received, a formal RFP evaluation was not conducted. It should be noted, however, that both proposals were reviewed in depth. Staff has reviewed the Eastlink proposal and is recommending that a new agreement be entered into with Eastlink for a three-year term. Eastlink has provided excellent service in the past and pricing received is favorable. The new $4,500 a month agreement has an increased cost of $500 from the 2015 price of $4,000 representing an increase of a little over 2% contained with the IT budget. Provides increased services. A doubling of bandwidth to the county building from 1,000 megabytes per second, which previously cost $2,125 a month, to 2,000 megabytes per second for $2,325 a month. A doubling of the speed for $200 per month. An internet connection for the three long-term home had a cost of $100 each. The total cost of the enhanced services from Eastlink is $54,000 per year. The pricing is guaranteed for a three-year term. The recommendation is before you and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al on the RFP? See done, mover and second for that report, please?
Mr. Warden, sorry, can mute button quick enough?
Okay, go ahead, Dominique.
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. The RFP responses, I, so I think there was a concern from a vendor about the routers, you know, creating a bit of a bottleneck for the requested enhanced service. And the answer was that there was no timeline. But no timeline to replace the routers. And I think if I caught everything correctly, I just heard differently that there was a plan to replace the routers in our asset management this year. And so, I'm wondering why the answer is different. And I'm interested in staff's analysis as to why there were so many bid takers, but so few applicants.
Al? So, to answer the first part of that question, it was an oversight on my part. I apologize for that. It was in the plan and as I said, it was an oversight on my part. As far as the second part of that question, so many takers. I possibly defer to Mike Hookstraw in answering this question. It's, I believe that the process is open for anybody that's a member of the site, they can download it. But that doesn't mean that they're going to respond to it after they look at the requirements of the RFP. Mike, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yep, I can add a little bit to that. I think part of it is too, is the perhaps some of the vendors cannot meet the requirements that we were asking for in the RFP. So, that could be why. I mean, our new bids and tender service goes out to a lot of vendors and a lot of people can download those documents. But again, once they, once they read the requirements, they could choose then not to bid, so.
Go ahead, Dominique.
So, as a follow-up, so I have to say that I'm concerned by the oversight because I could, we could argue that the requirements in the RFP were pretty clear. Like even as you, before you download it, unless I understand, I don't understand the sequence properly. But, but the oversight bothers me. I think it can contribute to a vendor. Perhaps our plan doesn't appear to be viable, that we're not going to have routers that are going to support their service and they may decide, you know, I'm not going to get involved. So, anyway, I'm a little disappointed with that and pardon me, I have some additional technical questions, but I, there maybe for my own information, I can follow up with staff directly.
Okay, thank you, Dominique. Any other questions for Al on his report?
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
I guess I'm a little concerned, like it's a three-year deal, but in three years, we're probably still going to get the same results, only one person, one company bidding on this. It's almost like if we're putting a tender out for a truck for the rest of our life, there's only going to be one truck that's going to fit the needs. How do we know that we're getting a price that's good value? Tender for a bridge and there's five, six construction companies, we know they're eager, but we're into sole sourcing, aren't we?
Al or Mike, whoever wants to respond?
Mr. Warden, if I may?
Go ahead.
Counselor Marks, I agree with you and it's something I think that we can look at as through our rural initiatives committee, the broadband committee that we're going to be doing. There was a conference yesterday, during that conference, they were talking about the importance of if there's going to be an investment in broadband throughout the rural areas, that the importance of having the counties maintain control of that asset. This infrastructure was put in in 2005. At that time, Eastlink had ownership. So, it's the condition that we're facing right now and I don't know if we'll be able to address it as part of the broadband initiative or if we'll be focused in on the last mile, but certainly I think that's be a good discussion to take to that forum.
Okay, thanks Jim. Any other questions or comments on the report?
One last comment, Mr. Warden, just to say that if we could ask One last comment, Mr. Warden, just to say that if we could ask staff to include all the additional information that was included in the verbal report, because there were different numbers and different information provided than the actual report, like monthly rates that were not included. I think that would be good to have all of that captured for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dominique. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing done, mover and second for the report. Jones moves. Move by Jones, secondary.
Martin.
Second by Martin, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Oh.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Seven-two, motion is carried.
Now, are you doing a quarterly information report as well, Al?
I have that, Mr. Warden. It's Mike.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. So this is my quarterly report. It details the award of contracts approved by directors valued between fifteen thousand and one hundred thousand dollars. This report covers the period from January to March of this year. The list of the projects, the amounts, and the approved supplier is attached to the report as Appendix A. All contracts do comply with the county's purchasing policy. I do want to add, just in addition, I wanted to mention that all future quarterly reports will include the new dollar values that were approved by council as part of the new procurement policy. So the recommendation is the report be received and filed, and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike on the quarterly report? Seeing none, mover and second received and filed. Mover and second, please.
Marx, happy.
Move by Marx, second.
Jones.
Martin.
Second by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
We lose Counselor French one more time. Oh, thank you. Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Jim, you're doing the capping?
Assessment was introduced in nineteen ninety-eight, and the goal was to have fair taxation where properties of equal value would pay equal taxes. However, that caused a shift in tax burden from from historical levels and an outcry from those who were seeing their taxes go go up. The result was the province that introduced a capping and clawback program to soften the blow. And in effect, then, those properties that were under the cap program would have lower taxes that would be funded by those that were in the clawback portion of the program. Over the years, the province has been introducing measures that municipalities can enact to help us get out of this program. And as of last year, we only had six properties left in the commercial program. And that would enable us to exit the program after a four-year period. Elgin had already exited the multi-residential program in two thousand and sixteen, and the industrial program we exited in two thousand and nineteen. So as I said, we've, we have implemented all of the programs and options available to us that the province has has given us. And so we've we've made great inroads, and this year I'm happy to say that actually the six remaining properties from last year are now at full CVA. And so there's there's no capping taking place this year. And then for two thousand and twenty-one, we'll actually be able to exit the commercial class formally. And that'll be the end of the capping program. So the recommendation before you is once again to accept all of the the options available to us from the province. And as I said, that allows us then to get out of this capping program completely as of two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Questions for Jim on capping? Report, please. Purcell. Move by Purcell, second. Second by Ketchba, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Ryan, you're doing the next report?
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. As part of the approved twenty twenty capital budget, a tender was recently released in accordance with the county's purchase and procurement policy associated with the administration building, cooling tower, and south wing roof replacement project. Seven bids were received, which closed on May twenty-ninth and are detailed in the report. This project is expected to begin this fall and be completed by the end of November. With that, the recommendation is before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on his report? Seeing none, mover and second, please.
McPhail.
Move by McPhail, second.
Marks.
Second by Marks, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks. Counselor Marks. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Catherine, you're doing the strategic plan?
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council, the purpose of
Glad, Catherine.
Oh, thank you, thank you. The purpose of the report before council today is to detail a proposed promotional plan for the newly adopted County Council twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two strategic plan and to, of course, obtain the valuable feedback of council regarding how you as a council would like your strategic plan to be promoted. The plan identifies stakeholders, both internal and external, as well as the goals of the promotional plan, key messages to be used, and methods to deliver these messages, with, of course, some timelines to be followed. The three main goals of promoting this plan are firstly to create awareness, create awareness around the existence of the plan, the contents of the plan, and then also how this strategy is going to be meeting the needs of the residents of Elgin County. As much as this plan was developed by council for implementation by us as staff, it is ultimately a plan that was put in place for the benefits of our residents. The serving Elgin priority was, the whole idea of that was that we were going to be obtaining the feedback of the needs of our community and our stakeholders and to be incorporating that into all of the activities that both council and staff do. So it's very important that the public know that the plan exists, what the contents of it are, and that also it has been developed for the public. Secondly, the goal is transparency and accountability. We want to make it clear to the public that this strategy wasn't just a paper exercise and that it's going to be a meaningful plan for enacting positive change in the community. So part of this accountability will be firstly promoting the plan, promoting its existence, letting people know what the plans are, but also doing progress reports at regular intervals so that we remain focused and on course and that we don't deviate from the contents and goals contained within the plan. Finally, the third goal is alignment. It's important that not only the corporate-level priorities, but also the departmental and job-level priorities of staff are aligned with the strategy that council has created. So this is going to, this promotional plan also includes an educational portion that will involve collaboration at the staff level. Key messages used to deliver these and and achieve these goals will be that of excellence, responsiveness to the public and to their to their feedback, collaboration and cooperation with stakeholders and partners, and innovation and creativity, and new and interesting and efficient ways of doing things. And these messages will support us in achieving the three goals. Suggested methods of promotion are detailed in the report, range from traditional media to social media, presentations to councils, regular reporting schedules, and then finally, a video. The idea is to create a video similar to what was done for the Community Safety and Well-being Plan Promotion, where elected officials talk about their strategy directly to the public. So with council's approval, we can start planning on on filming a video to be able to promote council's strategy to the public. Despite COVID nineteen, we do believe that we can start this promotion right away and that we shouldn't wait. A timeline is in the report as well with some suggested times of different activities. And with that, I welcome any questions from council as well as any feedback or suggestions for the promotional plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Questions for Catherine on the strategic plan? Seeing none, motion to receive and file then, please. Move by Jiguer, second.
Marks.
By Marks, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Julie, you're doing the new committees?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of County Council. This report is a follow-up report from your most recent council meeting, and the report recommends that council determine ways in which an environmental advocacy committee can support council's strategic priorities through your continued work next week on the strategic plan. As well, this report recommends that council approve the terms of reference for a connectivity committee as presented, and that staff be directed to amend the procedural bylaw accordingly, and that council appoint Counselor Marks and Counselor Jiguer to serve on the connectivity committee as recommended by Warden Mennel. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie on the new committees?
It's Bob Purcell. I'm happy to move this report, and I I fully agree with the two representatives. We're carrying forward the knowledge and the history of Swift, and we're also putting Dominique on the committee, which even of today, you see that she is willing to put in the effort to do the homework and understand exactly what's going on, so I think we have two excellent representatives.
Thank you, Bob. So you're moving it, Bob? Second.
French.
Second by French, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah. Mr. Warden. Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Julie, you're doing the continuity planning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of County Council. This report really summarizes our our three months' worth of response to COVID nineteen in terms of our internal activities and promotional activities and service continuity planning. We have also included a high-level reopening strategy that we will now revise later on this afternoon based on the premier's announcement yesterday. So we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Al, I must comment, Julie, that congratulations for you and your staff to keep keep the county moving forward under these very uncertain times, and it's been difficult, I know, but we have carried on our business, so that's the important thing. So congratulations to you and all the staff. Questions or comments on the continuity? Mover and second for the report, please. Jones moves. Move by Jones, second.
Jiguer, all second.
Second by Jiguer, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Correspondence, we have four items of correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment? Questions? Done. Can I have a mover to receive and file, please?
French.
Move by French, second.
Jiguer, all second.
Second by Jiguer, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Julie, has, does anybody from the school board come online yet?
No, Mr. Warden.
Okay, Sally, I'm going to ask you to present that report just because you were talking to Megan.
I I really think that Megan and Bruce, they were the ones who wanted to do this, and I I there isn't much that I can say. They're they're just looking for, they're very concerned about the rural boards still and how divided the board is. It's very much rural versus urban still, and they're having great difficulty, and they wanted to speak to County Council about it for direction, et cetera, and I I think probably I'd like to leave most of their comments to them. The only thing Megan just asked me if it was okay to do it, she didn't really give me any more details, so I I think it would be better, I don't understand why they haven't called in, where they sent the invitation, I'm assuming.
Through you, Mr. Warden, I think that Counselor Martin may be talking about a different delegation from from the school board representatives. Today's letter of request submitted by Megan Reddick was that on behalf of Thames Valley District School Board, council support encouraging the community to decorate their yards and businesses with decorative lights this June in celebration and recognition of the class in twenty twenty. So as follow-up items, staff would be happy to coordinate congratulatory messaging on all of our electronic signage and coordinate some congratulatory messages messaging on behalf of the Warden to all of the graduates and students across Elgin County, and as well reach out to each of our local municipal partners just sharing this request from Thames Valley District School Board.
Mr. Warden, Mr. Warden, it's Bob Purcell.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, they also picked a very specific date that they wanted to have everybody acknowledge, the graduating students, and they asked that we use gold lights. So I don't think it's a a big problem. Our municipality will be doing it and already have it in the works. And I don't think it's a big problem putting a couple of spotlights like Christmas lights going in them to illuminate some of our places like the libraries and the and the and the hall or the the county offices, et cetera. I've I fully support this. It's one thing we can do for, let all the students in the school board catchment area know how much we appreciate their hard work.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Warden, Ed Ketchba.
Go ahead.
Last week, BAM Council had already discussed a plan on how to recognize students. Obviously, we don't have the gold lights available here, but we do have an electronic sign here, and we will be using that to convey that messaging on June 25th, which is the date, I believe, that they were targeting. And it's, I'm really gratified to see that the request has come forward to county, because I was hoping that the county might acquiesce to the idea of using their electronic signs, particularly at the library branches that were, it's available, to convey the same congratulatory messaging. So it sounds like if, if that's the will of council, then that will take place, and it's a relatively low cost and fairly easy way to put messaging out.
Thank you, Ed.
Just one thing, Sally, I'm just wondering, they wanted to make sure that it isn't just, you know, graduates this year, it's all students. They wanted to make sure even adult students, students doing one-year programs in places, they don't want it just to be, I guess the, the city had just wanted it very city-oriented. They wanted, like, the city representatives, they wanted it just for those graduating, and the rural ones all felt, no, it should be for every student this year, not just graduates. So it shouldn't be just saying, congratulations to graduates.
Okay, thank you, Sally. I, I'm sure that Julie can send out something to the lower tiers, and it's appropriate for, for all the kids and the, and the adults that are graduating this year, as well as the, the students. So Julie, you could be sending that out to the lower tiers in an appropriate way?
Certainly, Mr. Warden, and, and we will touch base with Megan Riddick and Bruce Smith just to confirm the messaging before we reach out to our constituent municipalities. Mr. Ward-
Do we need to, to move?
I think that the presentation, or that the, the letter submitted by Megan Riddick from Thames Valley District School Board be received and filed, and that staff proceed with notifying our local municipal partners, and coordinate messaging on electronic signage across Elgin County, and consistent messaging as much as possible with our partner municipalities in celebration of students in Elgin County in 2020.
Excellent, thank you, Julie.
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead, Mary.
Just an update as well, Elmer Council passed last week that we're going to light town hall up on June the 25th. So at night, we're gonna have the entire town hall lit in honor of the students. So that's how we're approaching it.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Mover and secondor for Julie's suggestion report?
I'll move it, Sally.
Move by Martin, secondor?
Ketchba.
Second by Ketchba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks? Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, other business, statement inquiries, my members? Matters of urgency.
It's Bob Purcell.
Bob, go ahead.
Mr. Warden, through you two, all the members of council. We have a dangerous situation in our municipality that has resurfaced. It's the intersection of Curry Road and Talbot Line, which is the old Highway Number Three. Both of those roads are county roads. Anybody that's familiar with the intersection knows that it's a problematic intersection with a very busy gas station, restaurant on one corner, a service repair shop on another corner, and there's a lot of vehicular traffic north and south, particularly with agricultural equipment and large machinery. And meanwhile, the old Highway Number Three is extremely well-traveled with transports and everything else, compounding that problem. We're the next phase of the expansion of Highway 401, and that will start shortly, and this is an EDR route, and it will have a tsunami of traffic, and we already know it's a dangerous intersection from our perspective. The reason I'm bringing it up under matters of urgency is this was visited already, and Brian did an excellent report, and I can't dispute any of the facts, Brian. But it doesn't qualify for a traffic light, and no other solutions, other than some parking issues were addressed at that time. But we've had another near miss. This time, I haven't seen the video, but my deputy mayor has, and it was about one foot from a senior on a riding tractor being hit by a transport, so it was a pretty scary situation. But these are happening on a regular occurrence now, and we haven't already started the EDR routing and that. So I'd like to make a motion so we can bring this back to the table. I'm not asking for a, a decision today, I would just like to have Brian work with our municipality and myself on some kind of solution. And the motion I'd like to make is that the County Roads Department document the cost of two options, and report same with recommended solution at our next council meeting for consideration. One, installing the traffic lights at this intersection, and two, creating a four-way stop with reduced speed limit and appropriate signage. That's the end of the motion, just to bring it back so that we can work together to try to find a solution. On another side, I'm, I'm happy if somebody can come up with a, a creative solution that will work, but this is a dangerous situation. I know in the past, we have had to deal with these in other parts of our county, but it becomes a political decision then, because Brian can't fabricate the facts or the numbers to meet the criteria, but we all know of situations where we've had to act ahead of time, and then let the traffic catch up. By doing that, I think we're probably saving lives or certainly injury. So I, that'd be my motion, if somebody would second it, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Bob.
McPhail, second that.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Warden, I, I'd certainly support this. Some of, some of us have seen too many car accidents up on the side of safety, so, and I appreciate the local, you know, to be honest, I haven't been in Dutton very often last month, but I appreciate local member, you're there, you see it, so I appreciate bringing that forward.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions or comments?
Just, just one, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, Doug.
I, I think, Grant, you'll have to help me with this. I, I don't believe Iowa qualified for a stoplight either, and it ultimately ended up in a young woman losing her life before that light actually come to the light of day. That, my memory served me correct?
That'll be correct, yes.
So I, I think that's something that we have to take in consideration, that certainly as an Elgin County Councilor, if there was something that, you know, I don't, I don't think that we can protect every intersection, but when we have video and we have the public that is concerned about the intersection, I think it warrants us having a very good look at it.
Okay, thank you, Duncan. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, it's Grant.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, I know EDR roads are a real pain in the butt, and you have an EDR route in your municipality, it's, it can be a challenge. Some people like the lights, some people don't like the lights, depends on which side of the light you're on, how long you have to wait for it to change. I guess I'm wondering, I assume the lawn tractor was on the driven part of the highway, which is illegal, Bob, but I do agree that over the next few years, we're gonna have our challenges with the 401, because right now, it's the old, they're upgrading, but then they're gonna be adding the third lane, apparently, in the next few years, and it's, it's no fun having an EDR route go through your municipality. It's, it is, we see that in Sheddon, because Sheddon just has a flashing light, and we've had a lot of close calls, and most don't get documented, or no, OPP will be called, but they're close calls and nothing happens, but residents get, have to go change their pants when they get home. So I, I think it's something we need to think about at least.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Any other questions or comments? So I got a motion moved by Purcell.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell? Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. There is one other item for urgent business, and it's a addition to the closed, closed meeting today, and this is under Port Bruce, and the authorizing provision for consideration in closed session would include litigation 239-2, solicitor client privilege 239-2F, and a position plan, procedural criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiated carry-on on behalf of the municipality. So do we need a motion to add that to the closed session, Julie?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Okay, so I need a mover and secondor to add that to the closed session, please.
Purcell.
Move by Purcell, secondor?
Jiguer.
Second by Jiguer, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Marks? Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Anything else before we move into closed session? Okay, I need a mover and secondor, we will move into closed session to discuss, under the Municipal Act, personnel matter about identifying individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relation, or employee negotiation, service delivery review. Mover and secondor, please?
Move by Martin.
Move by Martin, secondor? Secondor, please?
French.
French, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones? Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yeah.
Mr. Warden? Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Julie, I'm gonna suggest we, we discuss the bridge first, because the service delivery review.
Okay, we're all set, Mr. Warden?
Okay, thank you. We need a, a motion, or a mover and secondor, rising report?
Ketchba.
Ketchba, secondor?
Jones.
Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Reports from closed session?
Closed meeting item number one, Port Bruce Bridge, that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and secondor, please?
Sam.
Move by Purcell, was it?
Yes.
Second by McPhail?
Yes.
All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number two?
Resolve that the report from Strategy Corp be received.
Mover and secondor, please? Marks, seconded by Jiguer, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Marks? Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We need a motion to rec- Mover and secondor? Move by Jones, second by Martin? All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks? Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Bylaws?
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 20-27, being a bylaw to adopt optional tools for the purposes of administering limits for the commercial, industrial, and multi-residential property classes.
Mover and secondor, please?
Ketchba.
Move by Ketchba, secondor?
McPhail.
Second by McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Any other bylaws, Julie?
Yes, Mr. Warden, be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 20-28, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the June 8th, 2020, June 9th, 2020 meeting.
Thank you. Mover and secondor, please? Don't be shy.
French.
Move by French, secondor?
Martin.
Second by Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden? Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Anything else, Julie, for bylaws?
No, that's, that's everything, Mr. Warden.
Okay, any other comments, questions before we adjourn? Seeing none, motion for adjournment, please?
We'll move.
Move by Marks, secondor?
Jones.
Second by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Martin? Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight, one, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Hopefully by next council meeting, everybody will have a haircut and look significantly different.